Started.
Okay.
This is, Janelle, is Jackie on?
Yes.
Okay, Jackie, welcome and we'll get started. It is Wednesday, February 17th at six o'clock, and this is the regular monthly meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission. The agenda has been published along with supporting documentation. I have no individual announcements. Does any commissioner or ex officio have any announcement before we get started? Hearing none, then I'm going to go to item B on the agenda unfinished business. Discussion of possible action relating to regarding action plan. There is an attachment with some annotations and highlights from the Marin City Council. Kay and Janelle, I'm going to turn to you to walk us through this, and then we have a couple of assignments to make.
Janelle, do you want to start?
Sure, I'll be happy to. So, as we know, we took a lot of the projects that we've been looking at, sent them to council. They provided feedback to us. That's what's in that second column, one of the last columns actually, with the, is the council ranking. Where they had consistency is what has been highlighted. So there's a lot of consistency coming out of council on, on how they viewed those items. So we have a lot of items that have been elevated to high or medium from what the planning commission had identified. So there's, there's a good number of items that you can consider as we work on projects in the upcoming years.
And as I counted, there are seven high priority items that they have identified, that the council has identified for us.
Yes.
Kay, do you want to add anything?
Well, it was good to have the comments as well, and I know this was a lot of work for them to turn around quickly, so I'm grateful to have it because it gives us guidance. And just to say, for the proposals, not everyone on the subcommittee and certainly on planning commission believes in all of these, but we believe they're issues to be discussed. So I'll say that. And, but it is good to know where the mayor and council are coming from on all of these. Now Drew, what would be the most effective thing for the subcommittee to do next?
Well, it seems to me that there are, there are two different categories of items on the agenda, and Bonnie may have some other insight into what the Marin City Council, as she was thinking about this. It seems to me that we need to look at the seven high priority items, six of which I think can be assigned to subcommittees that exist, one of which I'd like to keep, not to borrow too much from Washington, but as a committee of the whole. And that's the review of 170. I think we all need to take some time on that and put that on the agenda coming up. On the other items, it seems to me there's been a head start on many of the high priority ones already. And we've got, I think, some reasonable expectation of moving forward. What I would like to suggest is that the subcommittee chairs identify those matters that they think fall within their subcommittee. Send those to me of the seven high priority items. I'll try and reconcile with the subcommittee chairs which items go to which subcommittee in case there's some overlap, and there may be reason for the overlap. And then, Janelle, what I'd like to do is have the 170 review on the agenda as an open item going forward. But that means that everyone on this call, including Bonnie if she would, should take a look at title, section 170, and give us their ideas about where there are some problems. And Kay, my recollection is that Tom West was keeping a book on issues in 170 for us before he left us. As we were going through things and found some issues, he was keeping books. So, Janelle, I don't know how that works with Anne Marie or you, but I think I'd like to ask that one of you take the initiative to reach out to Tom and see if he still has his rough notes on issues at 170. If he does, could you share that with all of us? And then, as we look through this, and just because you're new to the planning commission or even new to 170, doesn't mean you won't be able to bring up some good ideas. Particularly with fresh eyes, you might find some things that have been assumed, presumed, or understood through the actions of the Marin City Council, the planning commission over the years, but are not really clear in 170. So I think everyone can take a critical look at this and see where there are things that need to be explained, corrected, added, or in fact deleted. And Glenn, I look at you also, assuming Anne Marie would agree. I appreciate your assessment of some of the areas in 170 that we've talked about in the past that perhaps are lagging behind the most efficient or best practices, and see what we can bring forward. I don't think this will get done tomorrow. Obviously, it's going to take a couple of months at least. But there are, I think, reasons to spend time on this now as we overlook our future efforts. Not withstanding the other six high priority items, I see this as a continuing item, perhaps for three or four months. Bonnie, do you have any other thoughts or suggestions for us?
No, I, I think you, your summary and your way forward are both spot on. And I, and I think roping Mr. Mandalison is a good idea because through the years, I'm, I'm sure he's seen things in 170 that, that he thinks could be clearer or streamlined or changed. So I think, I think that's great. And absolutely. Everybody take a look at 170. It's a complicated thing, and look at each section critically, and come with your best, you know, your best ideas.
And Anne Marie's already, Glenn, approved your delving into this for us. So I just got a chat, as we all did, I think, from her.
Yes.
All right, any other comments or suggestions from anybody? One of the things we're going to talk about a little bit later, so keep this in mind. And I know we're a little bit behind the curve, but we've talked about this generally, is where we think we might need some outside help. And we always got to keep that in mind. We certainly have the advantage of Denrec giving us some help on the cuff, if you will. The water workshops have been really the beneficiary of some of their volunteer contributions, if you will. But as we're looking at some of these areas, if you see a particularly problematic issue where we might need some outside help, let's bring that up. And we're going to talk when we get down to the reports about a couple of areas that have already been suggested where we might need some help. And we're going to keep that running and then hopefully fold that into Anne Marie's budget discussions. So I think we have an opportunity to do some really important work for the city in looking at these items that you've already identified and blessed, now been blessed again by Marin City Council. And I look forward to all of us having an opportunity to really get into this very deeply and to make some improvements for the city. I can ask the subcommittee chairs if I may be so bold as to try and get back to me by next Monday. I don't want this to linger. Close the business next Monday with your recommended approaches or, or subject matters that are yours on those seven or six remaining high priority items. Tom, did you have a question? Tom Panetta, did you have a question?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions or issues related to item B1 and the action plan? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to C1, new business. Discussion and possible recommendation of Marin City Council for minor subdivision for lands of Jill Bartholomew and Matthew Tittman located at 408 Pilot Town Road, Sussex County Tax Map 335-8.00-223.00. There was attached to our agenda class and information about this. Janelle, you want to give us the overview, please?
I'd be happy to. So this application is just to create one new parcel with a residual parcel. The property is zoned R2H, so any new development, any, if this is so granted, would have to go through the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Commission for their review for a new house. The applicant is proposing one new lot that meets the code requirements for the lot size as R2 is minimum of 10,000. It exceeds the 10,000. The code, the, both properties will comply with lot size, frontage, and other items. It is not located within the floodplain. The Board of Public Works has indicated they have the ability to serve, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Anyone have any questions about this? What's the next step, Janelle, if we recommend approval of this? Mariner City Council filled the public hearing?
Correct.
Does, is this going to require an easement on the property since the, the turnaround for the driveway extends past the property line?
It may, or they might just relocate the driveway.
Do we need to clear that up before we make an approval or make it a condition?
I don't think so, because that's just something that would get worked. Again, it's, it's the same property owner, and we'd make sure that that is addressed prior to recordation.
It's the same property owner, but it appears that there's some divide I need to build on.
For family.
It's still a separate.
Understood, but we would make sure that would be addressed prior to recordation.
There's no problem with your putting in a, a condition on the approval. Just to make it abundantly clear.
Yeah, I think that's, that was the only question I had.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, are we prepared to make a recommendation? Tom, since you have identified an issue, do you want to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve or to send the Mayor City Council, Council, a recommendation to approve the subdivision with the condition that the driveway either an easement be issued or it be
relocated.
In other words, we want, we want it identified either way, correct?
Correct.
Is there a second for Tom's motion?
I'll, I'll second it, but I just want to point out something that just came up in the chat.
Yes, I was going to address that. I'm just taking notes. There's a, a person in the, in the chat who has a question that they have a deed from 1988 that says the property cannot be subdivided. That is a private deed restriction. The city does not enforce private deed restrictions. This also went through the HOA, and the HOA approved the subdivision, and that has actually been recorded. And then there will be a public, a, the ability for public comment at Mayor and Council.
I'll just second what Janelle has said about the deed restriction, that there may well be a cause of action related to a deed restriction if there is one out there. But it's not something the city enforces or would be involved in going forward. So there may be a civil action that could be filed between an owner, somebody who has the, the ability to enforce that deed restriction, but it shouldn't be part of your consideration. If, if this minor subdivision meets our code requirements and you think it's appropriate, your recommendation should not be guided by a deed restriction.
So next, another question came in, Janelle. Glenn, do you want to answer? Or you, I don't care, from the same person. Did the entity know about the deed restriction before they blessed it?
From my understanding, they did not know. I mean, I honestly, I can't speak for the HOA. They provided their, their, their process and did what they are required to do. I, I cannot speak for what they did or did not know. And again, it's a private deed restriction, which the city has no ability to enforce.
And if there were a suit, Glenn, we would not be a party to that, correct?
Should not be a party to it. And I'll just comment on the, on the HOA, they would view it, I presume, the same way the city views it. It's a, it's a private deed restriction unless the HOA has some bylaw that says they have to honor private deed restrictions within the community. The HOA would say, does this subdivision comply with our rules and regs? And if it does, they grant it. And if two owners want to have a civil suit to, you know, to dispute about this deed restriction, that would be a private action, not involving the city and likely not involving the HOA either.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm not familiar with the term private deed restriction. Does that mean it's a restriction that hasn't been recorded?
No, private just means is not, it's not a, it's not something the city has done. Private meaning that, you know, when somebody did something with that land, they might have placed a deed restriction on it. Somebody may have the ability to enforce that deed restriction. It's not the city that has the ability or obligation to enforce it. But a private deed restriction typically is between, you know, two, two or three owners get together, and they want to be sure that somebody doesn't have a chicken farm on their property right next door to them or whatever, and they all agree, we're going to put these deed restrictions in. So then if anybody, any of those three violate the deed restriction, each of them have the enforcement power to bring an action against the person who violates it.
So it's, it's in the nature of a private contract?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
It's very similar to the restrictions that a homeowners association will place on properties regarding, you know, height of fence, type of fence, those types of things. It's the most relevant I can, I can make that, the case for.
Any other questions? Can we, can we then call the item? All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Panetta and second by Mr. Crosby, signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining, motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on then to item C2. Discussion and possible recommendations of the Marin City Council for a minor subdivision of the city of Lewis for the Children's Beach House located at 1800 Bay Avenue, Sussex County Tax Map Again, Janelle, there was a cover memo from you, but you want to introduce this, please?
I'd be happy to. So the city actually owns the property. The parcel is, the parcel land that contains the Children's Beach House actually is the beach that goes from the Roosevelt inlet down past beach one and beach two. So currently, the Children's Beach House is on that large parcel of land. They have a 99-year lease. As they are going through some, some work, they're looking to get some financing and need the, the property to be on its own parcel of land. So this proposal is to create a separate parcel of land per their lease. And that's what the, the, the proposed subdivision will do is it will create a property that complies with the, the meets and bounds legal description called out in the lease. I know the boundary was a little confusing that was provided because it showed all the properties for the Children's Beach House. And I'm going to share my screen real quick, just to, because we've got 18 people listening, so just to, like, alleviate some concerns about what's actually being created. Give me just a minute. So the property, the parcel, the area in red is what's being created. The rest of that is the lands of the city, and then it goes out to the bay. Another good example would be the area highlighted in the blue is the entire parcel of land. What we're looking to subdivide is right where the little hand is, just to create the property that encapsulates the existing building. Again, Lewis Board of Public Works said they have the ability to serve. This property is located in the floodplain. So any type of work will require compliance with the flood regulations.
And why are they doing this, Janelle?
For financing purposes.
And why hadn't this been done before?
My understanding is it wasn't realized that it was not a separate parcel because they had a lease that had a clear meets and bounds legal description. So this time they were doing some work and they did even further back in research and realized it is still, the building is still part of the beach parcel.
Yeah, so, so far as we can tell, it was just simply an oversight. The, as, as Janelle says, the original meets and bounds of the original lease definitely identified this area as being part of the lease from the city to the beach, now the beach house. But, so this really is in the nature of housekeeping to create the area that they were already leased years and years ago.
Just no one, no one had cared before, and now it's, it's important.
Melanie?
Does the structure meet setbacks?
It has some rear setback questions that we're trying to resolve.
Do you mean relative to the build-to line? What are you talking about, rear setback?
To the property line.
How could we approve something that doesn't conform to setbacks then?
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mendalis.
Well, that's a good question. I'd not been aware of setback issues. Generally, the planning commission is not supposed to create a subdivision that would create a setback issue. I think, I think this one's kind of, this is unique in that the, the land was leased already to, to the, to this owner. So there's, there's a presumption that they had this land. So the, do we know, Janelle, if the improvements that are encroaching, were they built pursuant to permits?
I would have to verify. I would, I believe the main building probably pre-existed permits, because that would be part of the original building. And, and I'm getting confirmation that from the Children's Beach House that they were not aware of the setback issue and that everything has been received permits. I'm just going to have to go back and, and check with Robin to see what we have. Because one of the additions is about four feet off, and then the rest are less than a foot, actually about a half foot.
Trying to think of a way that you could approve it with a, with a condition that, you know, this, these issues get resolved at or before city council takes action.
And how could they get resolved, Glenn, if there's a building that's violating the setbacks that was built?
Well, an issue that I'm going to look at is, you know, would, would your action of this subdivision be more in the nature of, you know, ratification of what occurred many, many years ago? Because it, it was more in that nature than the, the structures were built, however they were built subsequent probably to the actual original lease. So I need, I need to look at some of the timing of when was the original lease, when were these items that encroach constructed? So there might be chronologically, there might be an argument that those items were constructed in a way that was permissible at the time or code compliant at the time. I just don't, I'm sorry, I just don't know right now that all those details.
The, the chat says, the answer from the chat is that, one, they say they're not aware of any setback issues, and that the buildings were constructed in 2000.
I'm thinking we need some more research and, and just a report so we understand what the situation is. I mean, if, if this is a time issue, maybe we could have a special meeting or something once we have that data. But I think we just need to understand, especially with all the discussion of encroachment on the beach and everything else, I think we need to really understand what the situation is.
Anyone else have any comments about this?
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
I, I was just wondering what happens to Bay Avenue. Does it, does the encroachment stop on Bay and does it freed up for public use?
I didn't understand that question, Joe. Say it again.
Right now, Bay Avenue is off limits to the public, and there's various little items that have encroached on it. There's no free passage there. Now that their lot has been defined, does Bay Avenue get freed up?
I don't think they're intending to do anything different, so that, I think, I think that area is intended to stay the way it is, but I, I see the point.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious now if the lot has been defined. Wait and see.
Tom, do you have a comment?
Well, I guess I just wanted to raise the issue. I don't, I don't know how pertinent it is right now, but I mean, in my experience, this is a part of the beach out in front that's about as narrow as it gets along Lewis Beach. Does that further challenge the rear line at all? This is, this is a, this is a sort of an active erosional area, the beach. I'm just putting it out there.
Janelle, is Robin with us tonight?
Yes, give me just a minute.
Robin, can you shed any light on the questions that have been raised about the setback and the approvals in the past?
No, unfortunately, I can't read. I'm, I'm not in the office, so I can't look up stuff real fast. But if it was done in 2000, all those building permit files are in our archive files anyway. Our active files only go back to 2004. Again, if, if there's, if the encroachments that you're speaking of are on the beach side, is that what, is that what you're talking about, is the backside?
Yes.
Then, then if it was all part of the beach parcel, then there, at the time, there might not have been.
There wouldn't be.
There wouldn't have been encroachment issues.
Correct.
Because it would have went all the way to the water. Now by drawing a line across there is where you're, might be causing the, creating the non-conforming problem.
Well, I think the encroachment that Joe was talking about is actually on the Bay Avenue side. The fact that Bay Avenue doesn't go through, isn't that what I heard, Joe?
Yeah, that's, that's, I was, went through there over the weekend. I was just amazed that they consider it private property and they'll keep out type of stuff.
Right, so, so it's not the backside, it's the front side of the building, it's the Bay Avenue portion.
No, the building encroaches into, into the, to the bay side of the building, not into the Bay Avenue. There might be some equipment that might be in, in, on the Bay Avenue road, but that is not an issue for this subdivision. And, and I do know people do access, because I've, I've received multiple phone calls about this, and multiple, multiple people have said, hey, they just want to know what happened. You know, will, can I still ride my bike and drive my car down there? So people clearly do use it, members of the public, and provide, and have access to that road. Because that was the majority of the concerns I received from phone calls was, can we still, will we be, still be able to use Bay Avenue? And the answer is yes, because this subdivision has nothing to do with Bay Avenue. It's just the property will then, will continue to have frontage along Bay Avenue. The encroachment of the building is, would be on the rear property line closest to the bay, to the water.
I'm a little confused by how people use Bay Avenue for vehicle traffic, because according to, and, and when I drove over there, I saw this too. There's a play structure, a playground structure. It's not like equipment that can just be, be shifted out of the way that extends, and you can see that playground extending from the lease, from the area that's being defined across Bay Avenue. So I, I don't think you actually could ever drive through there.
Again, I think portions of it are open to vehicles. Maybe that area is not. But that is not, that is something for city council to undertake about the use of the road. Because that's really part of what they have for them. And I believe they have a lease for having playground equipment in the avenue. So again, that is an issue for the council. The setback issue here would be for the building itself as it relates to the bay for, on the water side.
So by putting in this boundary, we're creating a setback issue. Would, is it terrorizing to just kind of move the boundary if it's on the beach side?
I think that's something that could be done, is to look at the lease area and to bump it out a foot or a little bit to, and again, I'm not the attorney. I think we've got multiple attorneys, city attorney, Children's Beach House attorney. Mayor Council, I'll need to figure out how to address the exact lease area of the property, but that could be an option. Again, what they're just trying to do is create the parcel that matches what their lease is. And it just turns out then, when you put the lease property, the, the lease boundary on, over where the property goes, it creates a little bit of an issue with the, the. it creates um a little bit of an issue with the the proposed rear yard setback.
But I I I think we need Glenn and you to review this more. So the the two parcels that are to the lower right on the on the plot plan.
Have nothing to do with this application.
Let me finish, Janelle.
I'm just making sure because there's been a lot of confusion on that one, too.
Okay. When you look at this, um the playground equipment is spanning it. And if you, there is no road from the corner of the upper left plot down to Bay Avenue. There is no connection there. There's a parking lot. So if we're drawing, if we're if we're subdividing and we're setting up these boundaries, the area in between the boundary where the beach house is built and the other two parcels is being used by the beach house. Now, I have no problem with that. But I just don't think that the these, if we're gonna do the plot plans over, we need to do it cleanly so that in the future, it doesn't look like that's a paper street or whatever.
So it actually is a paper street and there had been discussion about abandoning the road, but that is something that would have to go through mayor and council.
And you can see the chat suggests that that's being used under a separate lease agreement.
Yes. So there is a lease agreement to use the right of way um between the city and the Children's Beach House.
But I
As a former resident of Missouri Avenue, I want to thank the um beach house for making the I guess the western side of Bay Avenue, the the part that's a paper street on the west side. They make it available whenever there's flooding. It's kind of an important part of getting around there um when the water is high. So I hope that's not gonna go away.
Okay, but it seems to me that there are a number of valid questions that various commissioners have raised that necessitate us to um ask Janelle and Glenn for more information. We don't want to, I don't think the commission wants me in a position of approving something that's gonna pass the buck and create a problem for mayor and city council without further understanding the implications. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yeah, I think you're right. And I apologize. You know, I I see Diddy emailing on this a while back and I just didn't didn't focus on it, so um there seems to be issues that I need to resolve.
All right. So unless there's objection, I'm gonna suggest that we defer this until next month. We can take it up as soon as uh we're ready, but I think we need a lot more information before we'll be comfortable making a decision that creates a problem to pass on to mayor and city council or not. Maybe there are solutions that can be recommended. And Robin, I'm sorry, I think you might have to go back in your archives and take a look at some of the uh prior submissions to make sure we understand what the history of this is.
Drew, if we, can we ask uh the any representative from the beach house what their time constraints are? Because I certainly don't want to hold them up, but um you know, we also can't just approve something with open questions.
So
Richard Garrett is on is the person who's been giving us information on behalf of them. Can you add him, Janelle?
Yes. I just have to find him.
There there's an answer on the on the chat.
Yeah, I know they they were working under a tight times time constraint because they are again, working on trying to get a mortgage for the property. Because again, this is um being done for financial reasons.
And refinance if you get a lower interest, right?
That's my understanding. And Robin, I'm gonna speak for Rob. I don't think he'll actually be able to find anything because as Robin stated, the building complies currently with the rear yard setback. It's the placement of the lease line that that they've been leasing for so many years is creating the setback issue. So it's not a building permit issue because it it currently complies with the setback. It's when the line goes in that it it will not. Um and I believe in the past commission may have recognized needs for variances and other things before that needed to be resolved before they went to council. And I know we've been we've been trying to get all those items addressed.
So um if we were to push back the rear line to meet the the needs for conformity, do we set a precedent for any of the neighboring properties to somehow come back and say, hey, wait, we want that longer? That deeper rear rear line too.
Again, that's a question for mayor and council to deal with the the location of that lease line.
Well, the question, the precedent question is a good question for Glenn.
Yes.
I guess first I have to know, does does this proposed um line along the bay, does it line up with other properties along the bay now? Or are we are we already starting to do a a tooth type structure? Because I mean presumably you would want the line to line up and have one straight line across the across the back. I don't know if this does something different than that or not. But I will say that
I'm not sure.
But I will say that all of those lots, you know, they are recognized and have tax partial ID numbers and to change it would require another process like this. If if somebody wanted to say the beach house is now five feet further out toward the toward the bay than all the other properties, if they wanted to, if that owner or a group of those owners wanted to change theirs, they would have to do the same thing. They have to come here, ask for planning commission, take action on it.
But I think Somner's point was, is that setting a precedent? We really don't want to have give the have others come in on a regular basis or irregular basis and try and copy duplicate what the beach house is doing for various purposes, whatever it is.
For for what it's worth, I mean, just looking at the, I don't have access to the Lewis mapping program, but I'm looking at the Sussex County online mapping. And if you draw basically a straight line from the corners to the west and the east, I I'd be surprised that we would have a a rear setback issue. Especially when you look at all the rear setbacks on the houses on either side. But I maybe I'm not able to see it right, given the given the detail of the maps.
Okay, I come back to my uh earlier suggestion that we defer this. Pending more information from Janelle and Glenn about the remedies if there aren't, if they're necessary to fix the setback issue before we finalize a recommendation. Again, I'm gonna ask, is there objection to that?
Did Rich, did Rich come on the line?
Sorry?
Did Rich Garrett come on?
No, I apologize.
Okay.
There he is.
Hello, folks. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. Thank you all for your time on this issue. As I understand it, the lease, the original lease of nineteen thirty eight was correct. And when the leases were renewed in nineteen fifty five, that's when this error was made. And even when we built the building in two thousand, nobody realized, the city didn't realize it, we didn't realize it, no one saw the problem. And it wasn't until the Delaware State Energy Utility uh went to look at the uh tax maps that they saw that the building, you know, they saw what you see that uh that was shown on the map earlier, that it's actually sitting on city property or conversely, the beach house owns all the city property. I don't know which way to read it. So and I do want to make clear there there is a sand road and people do drive through all the way across the property. We do ask people not to park on our lots within the boundary. Outside, you know, that's not our problem to fight. But inside, because we have children, we can't just let people park and wander around the property, obviously. But there's certainly access along the sides and people walk, you know, down Bay Avenue every single morning. And in storms, the chains are taken down and people drive through as necessary. And there is no need or desire for any of that to change. That's not included in this conversation at all. And when we did encroach with the preschool playground, we got a lease. We came to city council, planning and zoning, we got the lease before we put that playground in. So we have that, I hope, covered adequately. If we don't, I'm gonna blame Glenn because you you were there, okay?
I was, I recall. I think I drafted, actually.
I think you did too.
Richard, just for the record, would you identify yourself and your relationship to the Children's Beach House?
Certainly. My name is Rich Garrett and I am the executive director of Children's Beach House since two thousand, um July first, two thousand and three.
Thank you. Jackie can now properly identify you in the in the minutes. Any any other questions for Rich? All right, I think we'll proceed as we've suggested and ask Glenn and Janelle to come back to us with more information. Uh and we'll try and wrap this up next month to make our recommendation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for participating. We appreciate your information. All right, moving on then to um unfinished business, item C three or new business rather, item C three. Discussion and possible recommendation to mayor and city council for a partial consolidation of land of Danielle Jones, Karen Clarence B. Stewart and heirs, closed Karen, located at three fifteen and three seventeen West Fourth Street in Lewis. Sussex County Tax Map three three five dash eight point zero seven dash two six five dot point zero zero and two six four point zero zero. Again, Janelle had a cover memo and the attached plot. Uh Janelle, would you take us through this, please?
Absolutely. So what the property owner is looking to do is to combine the two small lots. What this will actually do is increase its its conformity with the code. As both of these lots are are considered non-conforming. So it'll actually increase its its conformity with the code regarding um lot size, um frontage, um those items. It is in the historic district, so the demolition, the proposed demolition and a proposed new building will actually have to go through the historic preservation review, architectural review commission for their consideration and review. And BPW does have the ability to serve. This is not in the floodplain. Um and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'll go back to my question I could ask in the first one. How can we legally create two non-conforming lots without a a variance?
You're not creating two lots, you're creating one lot. They're combining the two lots, so it's actually getting closer into into compliance with the code.
Correct.
So yeah, this one's a parcel consolidation. The first two were minor subdivisions. So yeah, we're we're taking two really small lots and making it one slightly larger lot.
And and I recognize that, but we're still creating a non-conforming lot. And it's great that we're getting rid of two really, really small lots, but wouldn't this need a variance, Glenn?
So we're creating it to have a lot size of four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square feet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. That is correct, Tom. Generally, a planning commission cannot create a non-conforming lot, even if it's making it better.
Right. So I'm I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, but I think it's just another box that has to be ticked.
Well, it's also flag shaped and you're and is that an issue? I mean, it's already existed as a flagship, but is that a problem?
Well, I think it
Well, I mean, they can't get rid of it, the flag shape. So that that makes it, and if they do, then they'd lose lot area, um which would make it more non-conforming. Um so I think there's just a lot of existing non-conformities and existing uniqueness that goes with this property.
So the general rule is that you can't create a new non-conformity so that, as Janelle said, the flag is already there, you wouldn't be creating that. So that's not really an issue. The the undersized lot, they're already undersized. I suppose there's an argument that you're not creating a new non-conforming conformity. It's there's an existing non-conformity of being undersized. You're just making it less non-conforming.
Reducing by one.
That was uh, that's my comment was, we're not creating a non-conforming lot. The non-conforming lot's already been created. This looks like a step towards a towards the right direction. I understand maybe we need a variance or something legal, but for what it's worth, I think we should get it done for whatever it takes.
I I'm all for that. I just know the way the code is written and like if you take a house that is non-conforming in height and you shift it on a lot, you have to go before the board of variance to get that non-conformity accepted. Even though you're not increasing or potentially decreasing the non-conformity. I I think it's great that we're getting, once again, we're getting rid of two small lots. I just want to make sure we're not creating something that we're we're not legally allowed to do.
Procedure being?
Well, the applicant's attorney is online if you would want to hear.
That that was a previous application.
I'm sorry.
So this this application does not have have um um an an attorney that I'm aware of. And again, with my history of doing this, I I've never seen come across a requirement that you need to get a variance for making something come more into compliance. Um but this is a new place, so that's quite possible.
I I believe, and Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't looked at the the code, variance code recently. But I think what it says is that anytime you do something to a lot, any new addition, any new construction, anything else, you have to meet the current codes.
In in some respects, I mean, there there's a there's allowance for some non-conformities to remain that typically the the construction has to comply with existing codes. So you can't, you know, extend further into a setback or whatever without a without a variance.
Correct.
You know, my my general view has been, though, that you can't create a new non-conformity. That's different than what I said earlier, probably, which is you know, I said you can't create a non-conforming lot. Generally, the rule is you can't create a new non-conformity. So I I do think you could take the position that the non-conformity already exists. You're not creating a new non-conformity and you are making the lot better. And that's one that I do think you could at least take, if you see it that way, you can take a vote on it tonight. I will, of course, do more research before it gets to city council to ensure that's the correct interpretation. And if it's incorrect, then unfortunately, I'll have to advise city council of that. But the general rule is you can't create a new non-conformity.
What what would be the downside of going the variance route that Tom was talking about?
Other than time, I mean.
Time, money, um and time.
I think that would be a little bit silly in this situation. I mean, this kind of looks like a common sense fix. You know, we're taking something that's a bad situation and making it a little bit better, a little bit closer towards what we want in the city. I liked what Glenn had said most previously last year.
If Glenn's, if Glenn can, if Glenn has a legal rendering to that, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I I think I I think it's supportable, Tom. I, you know, again, I'm gonna of course ensure that with some additional research, but I I think it's supportable that you're not creating a new non-conformity and your factor bringing the lot more into conformity.
Bonnie, do you have any uh idea about how the mayor and city council would prefer this to proceed?
I have not a clue. Uh what was going through my mind was uh much like what John is saying, I think it's, you know, this is where two wrongs might make a right. You know, you've got two looks to, from looks of it, two severely non-conforming lots. It's it's not like someone is and you're right, it is flag shaped. It's it's rather odd. But at the end of the day, and you know, I'm not certainly not saying the end justifies the means, but at the end of the day, if the goal of of you know, of of subdivision and and consolidation of lots is to make them more conforming, it sounds to me like an argument can be made. The problem with going the variance route is it's expensive, it's time consuming. Usually you lawyer up and all that sort of thing. Um no offense, Glenn. I don't, I don't know how this would be. I I can't speak for council on it. You know, I I really kind of have to go with the legal advice on on whether it's, this is an appropriate merging of lots. I mean, the other thing that, it's a different situation, but the other thing that's going through my mind is when um when Highland Acres was annexed, the zoning that we assigned to it, and again, different situation, but the zoning that we assigned to it created some non- created some non-conforming lots. There were a couple that didn't quite conform. But overall, it was the best zoning to go over there and the lots were such that, you know, there there wasn't a practical problem with setbacks and all that sort of thing. Um, so I mean, it seems to me that this is a practical matter. This makes all the sense in the world. Um, I'll depend on Glenn as to whether or not it's legal. Because things that are illegal make all the sense in the world, too, but, but, um, you know, obviously the, the you, I, you, sorry, Glenn, sorry to toss this to you, but I think your, your guidance really here is needed.
Yeah, I I really think, Mr. Chair, if, um, if somebody's willing to make a motion to approve it, that you should take that motion. Um, I will do some additional due diligence, but it it seems to me the better side of the coin is that the law would be on the side of bringing things into conformity. That's what zoning laws are created for, and I can't imagine the law would turn out that this would be unapprovable somehow.
And it would still go through a public hearing with the Marin City Council.
Minor subdivisions, minor subdivisions don't go through public hearing.
They just go through.
They send it to go to the, the City Council approval.
So it would rest, the motion, if there were such a motion, it would be to approve this subject to ratification of the, um, legal assessment of the validity of of combining these two lots that are non-conforming, resulting in a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, I think, I think I framed the motion a little bit differently. I think I'd frame it of, uh, you know, recommend, recommending um, approval to Mayor and City Council with the condition that the city solicitor, um, provide additional advice on the issue that's been raised as to lot size to Si- to, when City Council takes it up.
I'll make that motion.
I'm willing to bring forward.
Mr. Andalus suggested.
All right, so Sumner, you've made the motion. John, did you just second it?
Um, yep, second.
All right, is there any?
Just because he's faster on the unmute button, that's the only reason.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion passes. All right, moving on then to items D, reports, starting with the subcommittees. Sumner, annexation?
So, uh, we, we finally had our first meeting. I thought it was a very good discussion. We had a thorough review by Janelle of, um, uh, the annexation process and the various, um, parts of code that that relate to annexation. I think all three of the committee members had sat in on the, the, um, uh, meeting earlier in that day where the council was talking through the, the question of 1145 Savannah Road. So we all got a chance to sort of see what, how this annexation process works in the early stages. Um, based on what we've done so far, um, we are looking through the code um, and evaluating it with respect to three, um, sort of topics right now, one being, uh, density, another being open space. And, uh, the third being, um, what's the third one?
Cluster.
Cluster, right, clustering, of course, clustering. So we have a meeting, um, on Monday at 11 o'clock. Uh, I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get, get some good stuff done. In fact, I'll, I'll offer that, given that, um, list of things that we know we're gonna need to examine, I'm happy to volunteer our committee to look at the open space item on the, the action plan list. Because it's already, I think, on our minds.
Thank you. All right, any questions for the annexation subcommittee? And again, um, those meetings are published. If anybody wants to attend, if they're not one of the formal members of the subcommittee, they're entitled to do so. Those are public meetings. Um, annexation, I remind everybody, is a, is a direct, um, referral from Marin City Council. So we need to move it along and get back to them with whatever recommendations, if any, that we have. All right, Sumner, thank you. Appreciate it.
Actually, one question. Um, the LPC action plan listing for the annexation review is listed as low priority by the council. I'm curious what the explanation for that was.
You looking at me?
Yeah, I'm looking at you.
No idea.
Okay.
You had five, had five people independently giving, um, giving their views, so I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Janelle, do you have any idea?
I, I do not know.
Okay, all right.
Well, Sumner, obviously, there are two new council people on there. And this was a September referral, you know, that, that, um, I think at the time was, uh, ripe for some discussion. Um, maybe other things have superseded it since then, but I think we still need to move forward to get back to them.
Okay.
All right, um, action plan. Kay, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss?
No, I, I'm not even sure we need to have an action plan subcommittee anymore, do we?
That's a question I was gonna leave with you after you made your report, if you have one.
I think, no, I, I think, um, now we've got the ideas, we've got priorities, we've got comments. So I think we've got our marching orders and, um, I'm grateful for everyone's help. It was a lot of work to thrash that together, so thank you.
Well, on behalf of the commission and the city, we want to thank you and your team, because you did a yeoman service, bringing together a lot of issues that need, um, consideration, if not now, down the road and and organizing in such a meaningful way. It was a yeoman service to everybody and we appreciate it. And, um, you graduated into the post-subcommittee world.
Yay. One thing done, I'll take it. Thank you, everyone.
All right, Melanie, floodplain?
Uh, no action. Uh, I believe that the, uh, proposed regs are hopefully in review at the core.
All right, and there are a number of items that I'm sure you're gonna want to weigh in on, on the high priority action plan list, so I'll look forward to hearing back from you on that. Tom Panetta, sea level?
Okay, so, um, Janelle distributed the current version of the resiliency, uh, section, which covers sea level rise. And then also a, um, a cheat sheet that Bob had put together, which really helps to, um, uh, provide an outline of what we've done so far. So the, the two sections we've, we're ready for review on is the critical infrastructure and redevelopment section. The next section will be new development subdivisions. But we really wanted to have a discussion and feedback from all of you before we started in on what's probably the, the, the gonna be the biggest, most difficult one. Um, if I could just, from a high-level perspective, um, what, what we did was, um, for critical infrastructure, our code currently says that critical infrastructure should have possibly be built outside the 500-year floodplain. Otherwise, it needs to be mitigated. But the, 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 the conundrum is that there is no elevation provided for the 500-year floodplain in the FEMA maps. The, the good news is that the flood studies, which back up the FEMA maps, do contain elevations for the 500-year floodplain. So you'll see in the table that was distributed that what we've done is for critical infrastructure, we've chosen the base flood elevation as the 500-year, which would come from the flood study, plus sea level rise at, for new it, new critical infrastructure, 80 years out, which is 36 inches. The, the dimensions are, for illustration, that's what's currently projected. Those are not hard numbers. We're merely gonna reference the curves. But just for everyone's sake, right now, if you were to build a new critical infrastructure, that would be the sea level rise. And then using the existing 18 inches of freeboard, which is really a uncertainty actuarial number, which is generally accepted by, um, most places. For upgrading, we did the same thing, except we used, uh, a 40-year outlook. For redevelopment, we shifted to using, uh, the base flood elevation of 100-year, which is currently what we have in our ordinances. And then we look, chose a 50-year lookout period. And that 50 years are something we discussed quite a bit. Um, you have to realize that, um, the AIA, um, the architectures and generally accept the practices that houses are designed for 100-year lifespan. Doesn't mean that they don't require maintenance, but the structure itself is assumed to last 100 years. So we, we felt that we needed to go with some projection that was far enough out that we were not gonna create a undue nuisance for the inhabitants of this fine city in the year 2070. Um, where we would have buildings that were islands. Um, and then you chose the, continued with the 18-inch freeboard. So that's kind of a general overview. Bob, Summers, is there anything I missed?
Oh, no, I mean, I think, I, I, I think that does it. I just want to underscore the, the point that Tom made about the, the numbers in that sea level rise column, the 36 inches, the 23 inches, whatever they were, um, those are just based on a, basically, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if we want to have a table um, that, that outlines by year, you know, from the, you know, the last, um, declaration of what mean higher high water is moving for NAVD 88, moving forward, you know, uh, until the, the numbers are updated. Periodically, NOAA updates the whole calculation about tidal datums. And, um, and periodically, as we've discussed, the state has a technical sea level rise committee that's reviewing all the available information. And we figured they're the people that will make these, these, uh, determinations. It's not our job to be making the fine determinations. We will reference their most recent work.
Along those lines, the, the opening part of the ordinance, uh, states, um, that the use of the current intermediate sea level rise from the most recent report from the Delaware Sea Level Rise Technical Committee by Denrick. So, uh, as Jill's always pointed out, um, if five years or three years from now, a new set of sea level curves get generated, that then gets fed into this, and it's always a moving target. So I guess at that point, I'd like to, Janelle, is there anything else that you think we missed?
Just to clarify, that this ordinance would impact the properties that are currently in the 100-year and the 500-year, um, floodplain.
Correct, thank you.
You know, I don't see the, the actual draft ordinance in the materials that we got.
It's on the website.
Okay.
I just didn't have a chance to put it in the packet, because you, when the packet got posted, you guys were still working on it. Um, but it is, has been on the website since last week. Um, and it was updated based on, on your comments. Um, and, um, I think one of the big items for redevelopment is that they took a look at, um, some BMPs regarding, um, impervious surface. Is reducing the overall impervious surface to 50%. However, if you do best management practices, um, you can get up to 60%, but you have to provide some type of, of items to help deal with the water quality and quantity, um, that we, we've been addressing, um, and we recognize will continue to impact um, from, um, sea level rise.
Yeah, Melanie, thank you very much. I mean, um, uh, Janelle, I completely skipped over that portion. So we did reduce the pervy, impervious coverage from 60 to 50. And, um, while the ordinance only lists titles of best management practices, what goes with this, and you'll see up on the website, is a set of design guidelines. So that will be used for the review process. So if you want to regain part of that 10% reduction, you can go, you can provide, uh, pervious driveways or, um, rain gardens or whatever. And there's, in the design guidelines, um, uh, either numbers or guidance on how much offset you can recover for each one. Because what we didn't want is that, um, you know, you could regain 10% for putting in two rain barrels. That just doesn't make sense. There has to be some sort of equivalency created between the mitigating measures and, uh, the regaining of, uh, impervious coverage.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, so, um, you know, while Tom was talking, I was going back over the list of highly ranked LPC action items. I, I think, I think there's a, there's gonna be a need for at least the floodplain committee and the sea level rise committee to interact a little more, given that I know we have been bumping up against a number of sort of issues that fall into floodplain, and I'm assuming the floodplain discussion has been bumping up against things having to do with sea level rise. And now Tom is bringing up the, the aspects of stormwater, and I noticed there are a couple items in there about impervious surface and stormwater. I'm, I'm curious how we resolve all of that moving forward. You know, between the different committees, or whether there's a way that we, we, we start a, a more formal dialogue to bring these things together.
Well, I think there are many ways that one can do that, Sumner, your point about a more formal dialogue. Um, once we take a look at the subcommittee recommendations coming back, I think there will be a necessity to combine efforts on a couple of subjects. Let me ask Tom a question, though, Summer, to further answer your question. What do you see as your next step, Tom?
Well, what we'd like to do, uh, is the two next steps. The first is, we'd like comments back from all of you to, are we going in the right direction? Um, are we being too conservative? Are we being too aggressive with, um, the number of years out or the curves? Um, and then, based upon that, I think we'd want to try to create, um, uh, get this before City Council and get their feedback on these first two steps, because they can be carved out from new development. And then with your comments, we would go forward and work on new development. So I think we'd like to bifurcate it at this point and get critical infrastructure and redevelopment through into City Council, so we'll get a public hearing. Uh, Glenn, do we need a public hearing on our side, or will that only be on the City Council?
Oh, the City Council will have to have one, but you can conduct one if you, if it could be beneficial.
Yeah, that's my concern. I'm wondering when we want public input. Because I think that's an important factor that we should always e- e- encourage. And I would think one of the next steps, Tom, is to get some kind of public, uh, forum hearing set up to get input on this before we go to Marin City Council.
I would agree, but Bonnie, would you like to chime in?
I, I have a question. Um, and I, I seem to recall that this did come up when I was listening into your subcommittee, but, um, you know, the obvious question is, if, if you raise a structure X amount, um, does, what happens at the top end, right? So you got the whole thing up, five feet or whatever it turns out to be. Did you all discuss at all, um, what happens to the height restrictions, um, in, in the various zones? I mean, are you recommending that these structures in the future be allowed to go higher than 30 and a half or 34 feet, or?
They're already higher down there supposedly because of the floodplain.
It's 34 feet in the floodplain and 30 and a half not in the floodplain already. My question is, if you're adding, whatever you're adding, you know, three feet, are you all also recommending that you go say in the floodplain from 34 to 37? are you all also recommending that you go say in the floodplain from thirty-four to thirty-seven?
Or?
We have not done that.
We have not, and we actually pulled a number of building permits regarding to make to see what we were doing. And the majority, I think, all but like one exceeded the sea level rise projection that we were that we are proposing, which is the forty-year out. So they were already building the houses higher and still complying with a thirty-four and a half foot height limitation.
Okay, but I thought that Tom said that we were talking about houses that were designed for a hundred years. So.
But we're we're only.
We're talking about the critical infrastructure part. I mean, if the answer is no, there's no recommendation that 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 the structures get taller, that that answers my question.
Yes, that's correct. And just to clarify what Janelle said, for everyone else's sake, is the majority of the units of properties have been built on out in the hundred-year floodplain. Because they have to be elevated about three or four feet, they've actually elevated them nine feet or so, so you can get parking underneath them and not have it as less space. And that's and they still fall within the thirty-four-foot height requirement restriction. So based upon that, we didn't feel that we wanted to recommend at this point adjusting the height. Because we get into all sorts of other issues, obviously with view sheds and so on.
Okay, thank you.
There were two exceptions to that that Janelle found. Two of the building permits were not at that height.
Correct, because they didn't provide parking underneath them.
Right, and but they still complied with current regulations. But, you know, all of the others that we polled, and we just kind of randomly pulled about a dozen of them, were meeting what we are proposing for sea level rise, which was, you know, exciting.
Okay, go back to the next step, Tom. I would like to see us have some kind of public forum. It can be the full commission or it can be the subcommittee. I don't really care. But I do think we need to have an opportunity for public input on this and publicize much more aggressively the recommendations and the the proposals so that we can get more input on this. Janelle, we still have a public hearing scheduled for our next monthly meeting on the seventeenth. Is that correct?
Correct.
And are they going to be prepared with the answers that we gave them time to to acquire?
Last I heard, they were.
All right.
I I drew, if I would prefer that we did it with the whole planning commission because of the seriousness of the issues. I mean, you you guys are all going to have to be the the final arbiter, so.
Well, we're just going to blame you anyway, whatever's, you know, goes wrong, so don't worry about it.
I I I'm used to that.
So we thought. So let, can we defer for the moment the issue of when the scheduled public hearing? We'll pick that up at the end of the reports. And then we'll try and coordinate a time. In the meantime, look at your calendars, folks, and see when you might have some availability for, again, a Zoomy public hearing. Not the best, but that's all we can do at the moment.
And if you wanted to send available dates to myself and Drew, that would be helpful, because then I can start getting rid of conflicts on the city council.
We'll talk it out in just a minute. I want to get the wetland buffers first. Anything else, Tom?
Nope.
Thank you all for your efforts. And and Bob, we appreciate your chart. It was very helpful. All right, wetland buffers.
Yes, we have a draft ordinance that we would like to present to the commission. Hope to get your feedback on some of the facts that we got in there. And Janelle, can you screen share a version of the draft? Or let me, I've got it up as well. So as it is right now, the excellent recharge area, you're allowed up to twenty percent lot coverage. And we're looking at raising that to fifty percent total lot coverage. And I really like to thank the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee, and they did a lot of legwork that we were able to use in our draft ordinance with the practices that help you retain water and get it back into the ground, which if you choose two categories of the runoff reduction practices, it could allow a homeowner to get up an extra ten percent lot coverage, bringing the total to sixty percent, which is still less than the sixty-five percent allowed. Given this is the excellent recharge area is something we want to try to protect. And we feel that this is a good way to go about doing that. We'd like to know from the full commission how they feel about the fifty percent plus ten percent, as well as if you scroll down a little bit for me, Janelle, the annual reporting condition. I think it's below. Yeah, there it is. We did have some debate, not debate, but healthy discussion over this topic, how this will be done by the homeowner, whether it could be done on the taxes form. So I think that's kind of where we're at. We really want to get this to mayor and city council as soon as we feel that it is up to snuff. Did I miss anything, Janelle, or anybody else from the committee?
Nope, you covered it.
What would be the remedy if they fell out of compliance with the installed facility?
That would go through our code enforcement process, just as anybody else who's in in violation with the zoning code, there's a violation process, and we would work with them to get them back into compliance with the code.
So, given that the Silver Eyes Committee has yet to put this same pile of stuff forward formally, I guess I'd hope that we would actually go through both of these. We'd put both of these together, given that they're so similar, and run them through a public hearing process. Just a comment about the distinction of the excellent recharge area versus the rest of the beach area. I guess just initially, I'm a little uncomfortable with giving that same ten percent bonus option. If I read you, I mean, what's the difference between being inside or outside of the excellent recharge recharge area?
It's been identified, the excellent recharge area is a resource that the city has that we want to protect, and it's been identified as a resource worthy of protection. So we feel that these.
What I'm asking is the Sea Level Rise Committee is basically suggesting these same things for the rest of the area.
Yeah, so the code would be consistent across the board.
Exactly. Good point. Thank you for making a great point, Sumner. I appreciate it.
Yeah, the intent is if 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 you don't like the fifty percent in the excellent recharge area, as John has stated, that is something that can be up for discussion. There has been serious concern over enforcement of the current code, which is twenty percent. And how do we find that balance between what the code currently allows is sixty-five percent plus and the need to move this piece of ordinance quickly? Because we have a lot of projects that need to to somehow address excellent excellent recharge area. It is the hope of council to get this passed within the next three months, is my understanding, based on last week's meetings. And again, this had been drafted, and then it kind of got put into the sea level rise. And I think just from a planner perspective, it it consistency across the board. But if you want to change the the numbers for the excellent recharge area, that's something you can do. Again, because we're going from twenty percent up to up to potentially sixty percent for your lot coverage in the excellent recharge area. Again, the subcommittee thought that was fair and also recognized that it was consistent with the sea level, what the work of the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee.
So, having listened to the source water protection conversations and the presentations by one of the applicants, technical experts, and I I see there's a comment by Bob Payne in the chat regarding the engineering study stuff. I'm assuming that was the other burden that everybody was complaining about was the requirement for all sorts of professional.
Correct. So currently, the code, as it states, and we have been informed to enforce, is your maximum lot coverage is twenty percent. If you want to get to the fifty percent, you have to do the engineering study, which is an environmental assessment impact report, which requires some borings and a much and a number of other items. What this does is this can leaves that in there, but we're giving you the fifty percent plus an extra ten percent with the best management practices. So if you can't meet that and you need to go over that, then you have to do that study.
So that becomes the sole difference, basically. If we were to go with the draft, as the Sea Level Rise Committee had sort of worked up the BMPs and the design guidance, that would be the sole difference between the non-excellent recharge areas and the recharge areas would be this additional technical burdens if you can't work with the fifty or sixty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
So a couple of things, questions. Since this is using the same BMPs as we created for sea level rise, the design guidelines have got to be part of this.
Correct, and it references the design guidelines.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yes, it does.
I missed that. The second one was, I still am very, very uneasy with the relationship between this and our wells in Lewis.
Again, go ahead, sorry.
So Denrec needs to chime in on this. And we need to make sure that BPW is confident, and I'm not sure we are, Janelle, that the the impact of sea level wise, combined with the excellent recharge areas are not something that we should be concerned about.
So this is separate from wellheads. This is looking at.
Way in?
Yes.
No, you go ahead, Janelle. I'm sorry.
So the excellent recharge area is not looking at wells in particular at all. What this is doing is looking at quality and quantity of water getting back into our aquifers. We need to take a holistic approach. Whether or not we're using it as drinking water does not is not the key component to the excellent recharge area. It's about getting water back into the ground, getting cleaner water, quality of water back into the ground, and slowing saltwater intrusion, which we we know is occurring in that area. So I know everybody wants to go talks about the wellheads, but the wellhead protection area, this section of code, is completely different from this excellent recharge, because we're just talking about quality and quantity of water back into the ground.
I never said wellhead protection. I said the wells. Go ahead, Emory.
Can I please add something? Two things. One, this isn't about Lewis's wells. As Janelle said, this is about the the state recognized, and Janelle and I have had numerous detailed discussions with the the staff at Denrec who oversee the program. And one one of those people had was instrumentally involved in development of the program and the legislation. So we've had detailed discussions. Now, it's now, well, Scott, yes, but that he's not at Denrec. He's at DGS.
Right.
We we have met with Matt Krebowski, who's the program manager for that program, and we've met with Steve Smaller, who was involved in developing that program, you know, in the early two thousands and has been working in this stuff for for decades. What Steve relayed to us is that the purpose, the state in developing the statutory requirement recognized that south of the C and D Canal, all of Delaware's drinking water is reliant on groundwater resources and that the state had a responsibility to make sure that the areas that replenish the aquifers were protected and the areas around the wells. They both provide very different, very different things. You know, part of the wellhead protection area, while certainly recharge is important, not not getting contamination in there. So that's why, if you look at the ordinance, it's structured so that the excellent recharge area, or I'm sorry, the wellhead protection area is much more restrictive in terms of use and in terms of what types of chemicals can be stored and those types of things. The excellent recharge area, when we talked to to Steve Smaller and Matt Krebowski about this, they said us looking at the excellent recharge area in our jurisdiction is not about us protecting Lewis's wealth well well area, wellhead protection, or Lewis's specific water supply. It's that each of us who have a water supply is relying on other jurisdictions to do their part in this ordinance to make sure that these areas are protected so that all of us who rely on groundwater have it available. So what Steve Smaller indicated is that if we were to say, because initially, Janelle and I raised the issue of exempting this area. And what what the response was, if we start allowing people to exempt, or people, municipalities, counties, whatever, to exempt areas because somebody says this doesn't directly impact anybody's drinking water, this doesn't, you know, have any effect on on any public drinking water system. Over time, we're not replenishing the aquifers, and all of our collective drinking water is in jeopardy because we all rely on groundwater. So the importance of excellent protecting excellent recharge as it relates to saltwater intrusion is important and also just getting the fresh water back in the aquifer. So it it's not something that is related directly to Lewis's drinking water supply. It's related to the overall groundwater resource that is used by more than two-thirds of the state to provide our drinking water.
I I agree a hundred, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said. And but I think the key point there is that it's an unconfined aquifer. And when you look at them, they're all interconnected. We don't have separate aquifers in most areas in Delaware. And being the ones that are closest to the ocean puts us most at risk for the sea level saltwater intrusion. If you're further back, you've got more distance between you. And we are next week at our BPW meeting having Scott Anders and potentially Tom McKennan come and speak to us to 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 turn to help us to understand what risk there is to. And if you're right, it's not just Lewis's wells. Time Water's got five wells. Rehoboth's got wells that are all very in the same close area as to what the risks are by not having the freshwater flushing. I don't know what the answer is. I just know that there's enough questions relative to all of our drinking water. And I'm speaking merely on Lewis's behalf because we're the, that's who we represent. But all of the drinking water down here.
I mean, you said the BPW meeting with those guys is this coming weekend?
Wednesday. No, next Wednesday is BPW meeting.
Okay, so so is there a reason we can't wait on action on this until after we've heard from that whole effort? And I have another related question.
Staff has already actually.
Conversations with the state.
So one, staff has already reached out to to Scott Anders and and had conversations about the excellent recharge area and ordinances. So from from our side, we have, we've done that. We've been working with Denrec. There is a need to fast track this based on council's actions and trying to address a number of items that are that are currently going on. And I lost my train of thought, sorry. And I think we also recognize. Um, and I think we also recognize that it's important to to figure out, to address. You know, we know we've got something going on. How do we, how do we? So I'm going to put back to you, are there concerns about the proposed ordinance? Do you think the 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 lot coverage is too high? Is it too low? Um, what about this ordinance is concerning that we want to wait on?
So I I'm I'm in the same camp as Tom regarding understanding the connections between the wells and the recharge area. I appreciate what Anne Marie said. Um, I appreciate the distinction that you're making between then that the state has made between the excellent recharge area program in general and the wellhead protection areas. But as Tom suggested, in this area, there may be some connection between the two. And we may not be able to simply treat them as mutually exclusive areas. Um, one of the questions I'd pose back to you, Janelle, or Anne Marie is, did, when you talked with the Denrec folk? Um, did you have a draft of the the BMPs and the, you know, the design guidelines? Did they, what did they, did they have any comments on that?
So we discussed that with them, but we were waiting until after we got um direction from commission before we asked for a formal review. Because we don't want to send them something that you're going to change and then ask them to do another formal review again. So that's typically how we wait. We wait until we get um guidance from the commission. Um, before we ask for a formal review, but they have um had access to the draft. And with the understanding of we are looking to put um BMPs into the ordinance.
Okay, so the question in my mind is something I asked earlier, which is we have a these same guidelines in the, basically the same guidelines in the sea level rise. It seems to me that we need to bef- before we would make a formal recommendation on this, I think we we bring it to a public hearing.
Let me suggest the following, which is why I deferred on the issue of public hearing on sea level rise. It seems to me we do need a a combined hearing on these two subjects. And I'm gonna, let me suggest a timeframe and a process by which we bring these together and see if it meets with the commission's approval. Um, I'm going to suggest that by close of business next Wednesday, the commissioners offer their comments to Janelle and the subcommittees on these two proposed ordinances. So everybody's had a fair chance to look at it. That would be the twenty-fourth, but also allow, if you want uh for input from the BPW meeting to be included, um you can incorporate that in any comments you submit. Then I would suggest we prepare the revised, if they are indeed revised, ordinances, post them. And solicit comments for a public hearing on either the tenth or twenty-fourth of March. Our regular meeting is the seventeenth. We are booked with another public hearing that night at five o'clock and the regular meeting at six. So I don't want to add to that meeting, but I'm suggesting we could be ready as early as the tenth or as late as the twenty-fourth. I'm sticking to Wednesdays since that's our meeting night, but also to give us time after um we finish on the twenty-fourth to get stuff in the public domain or a period of review adequate to come in with comments. So I would suggest we could take these both up on either the tenth or twenty-fourth, depending upon the availability of the commissioners.
I think it's an excellent idea. We got a number of comments in for tonight. Actually, we got a lot of paperwork in tonight from the public to um add to this discussion. And I think the thing about the overlay revision is we're under pressure to accommodate uh proposals in the pipeline. Um, there's no reason, I think you couldn't put something like this revision in place. Use it for a year and then revisit. Is it actually working? Do the BMPs actually equal out to what we think it is? And see how it works and then adjust. Because I think really what everybody's wondering is on the ground, is this really going to work? Well, I think the only way we're going to find out is to try it.
Just FYI, the twenty-fourth won't work.
What's the twenty, what's the problem with the twenty-fourth?
Um, the fourth Wednesday just doesn't work for, there's a already another meeting that has that night.
So the ten? Is there, is there a problem with the tenth for any, from any commissioner?
No, the tense works for me. Good.
That doesn't work for me. That doesn't work for me. I'm booked that day, yep.
At six o'clock?
Uh, from six, from from six to ten PM.
Well, I hope it's profitable.
Well, it's clear space. It's a tech night. It's right before the show, so it's, they do that late at night.
Um, is there another night of that of uh, when is clear, when do they start performing? You're muted, John.
That Friday they start, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, start shows, so. If my schedule frees up much after that, but that's uh, that Wednesday is not good for me.
Is the eleventh good for you, the Thursday, or is that booked up too?
Uh, that Thursday will, the eleventh will work for me.
Can we accommodate John and have it on the eleventh instead of the tenth?
Works for me.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so Janelle, this, the schedule should be comments from the commissioners and any other input we want by the twenty-fourth to come up with the publicly displayed, combine two ordinances with comments. Put it on the website, schedule a hearing at six o'clock on the eleventh of March. And we'll then bring it up at the next available opportunity, maybe even the seventeenth, depending on the public hearing goes. Before we make a recommendation to Mayor and City Council.
Uh, Drew, shouldn't it be the twenty-fifth for comments? Because the BPW meeting is four o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, the twenty-fifth is fine. So you'll be the twenty-fifth. I thought you guys met during the day more often than at night.
No, no, we always meet at four PM.
Okay, my apologies. All right, any other comments about this? I think we've got to pass forward. I think it's very important to get public input. Make sure everybody's aware of our proposals. And um notwithstanding what Mayor and City Council will do with their public hearing, I think we don't rush this through without at least inviting the public to share their thoughts with us in writing or at a, or at the public hearing uh on the eleven. All right, anything else in wetland, John?
No, not at the moment.
Good luck with your clear space uh reversal and run through.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to seeing you in Broadway soon. Uh, we're going to go to the individual reports. Anne Marie, since you're still with us, do you have any additional comments or suggestions for us, please? Any updates?
I don't think so.
Glenn, city solicitor?
Everything's good.
I know you pretty much touched on everything that I would have talked about.
Our councilperson liaison?
Nelson here.
Janelle, anything else we didn't bring up?
I'm good.
Any other commissioner?
Uh, H Park had a meeting uh February, what it was, I don't remember, but we do have a tax credit Zoom workshop coming up uh next Tuesday to twenty-third, so I will be update on uh tax credit soon.
We'll look forward to hearing how we can save money on our taxes.
Good luck.
All right, the one question before we go to the minutes that's been um not really addressed. I've had several questions come in on things we might want to use consultants for. Um, and I don't know exactly what other commissioners have thought of. Anne Marie, have you put in a a budget figure for the commission this year like you did last year?
It ju- the only budget figure we have in there right now is really to to um cover minor things, um, you know, the the clerical support and and minor things. I think it's a total of forty-five hundred. So i- if there are consulting needs for larger projects, we need to know. Um, we'll be discussing committees and commissions at next Friday, not this coming Friday, but next Friday, the twenty-sixth council meeting or budget meeting.
It's been suggested to me that we need the, an update of the HIC study, that we should have some additional input on um stormwater protection uh and that we need um it may not be a cost, but we need to do something more dramatically with Del Dot than we've been doing to figure out where they're going on some of the issues around us. I don't think that's a cost, but I'm just um articulating things that have been raised uh with me that we need more of. I'll just note also that I saw um a firm doing drilling on the bridge on New Road yesterday. Um, what I assume was doing core analysis for the replacement of the bridge. Hopefully, we won't have an Indian River Bridge problem when they redo that one. But um uh there are some questions that have come up about what Del Dot's plans are and what other things that we might need to be coordinating with. Does any commissioner have any other subject matters that they might like to see us um engage outside consultants to help on a subject? Hearing none? Is that? All right, um Anne Marie, let's talk offline about the potential increase in that forty-five hundred. I don't think it'll be dramatic, but let's, maybe you and I can talk offline about that.
Okay.
All right, any, if no other comments are coming, um uh moving to the minutes, section E one of the agenda. The January twentieth minutes, they were posted and are, were attached to the agenda. Does any commissioner have any corrections, additions, or deletions?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
So moved.
Second. Second.
None is Mr. Second tonight. Um, any, if no further discussion, all in favor, again, raise your hand or say aye.
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 Posed, abstaining, minutes are passed unanimously. Unless any commissioner has further discussion, I accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Done, way to go. Melanie, second. All in favor, say aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.